Not an official meeting, so. Okay, go ahead.
All right, great. So again, just want to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for participating. Wanted to share first of all that Sarai Peart, one of our committee members, has recently resigned from the committee. Her work commitments and other endeavors won't allow her to participate. So we will be looking for the mayor to make a, an appointment to the committee, one or two, to get us up to par. I just wanted to again mention, I think we've accomplished a lot. We've been in, working together for four full months. And we were able to select our architect, come up with a pre and post referendum contract, a timeline for the project. We were selected our external consultants, very happy to have the Burgers on board. And we held a special meeting where we were able to prioritize our sites. And so we've came up with three sites and we're still looking to add a couple of other sites, but we're very optimistic on where we are at this point in time. But again, we have a timeline and we will endeavor to stay on point with the timeline. I just wanted to also mention in the agenda under new business, you'll see that there is item C, planning a municipal building project. And I learned that one of our experts here, Nancy, had previously presented a report on a library or building project last year. And I thought that it would be helpful if she presented that to us. I know it would have been helpful earlier in the process, but I think the timing would be perfect tonight. And just a good opportunity for Nancy to share and present so we can all be on the same level as far as what's involved in the project. So Nancy, thank you for agreeing to do so and looking forward to your presentation. I think with that, we'll just go right into our new business and turn it over to Richard and Whit for a project update.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to lead the presentation. I'm going to rely on Whit to jump in at the appropriate time. If I could share my screen. Okay, let's start with the update on the milestones. This should be very familiar to you right now. There are a couple of new line items here, line item, subtask eight, public information meetings. I'm suggesting that we have public information meetings. They could be perhaps part of other meetings, but it would be nice to invite the public. I'm suggesting between the periods of January and April, just to keep people in the loop, give them an opportunity to hear where we are and participate. I look to you, Mr. Chairman, to Nancy also, on what the best format for that might be. It may be in the library or maybe some other format. I know that this being the digital world, those public information meetings might not occur in reality. But anyway, I, I think we should advertise them and make them available. So I haven't selected dates or when they might occur, but I inserted that line. I also inserted line number nine, council updates. Presumably, we will have meetings with the town council at various points. I'm suggesting it could occur in January, perhaps in March, perhaps in April, just to give the council members information as we, as it is being developed. Again, I look to Nancy to see what the best format is for that. Willing to come to the council chambers or wherever you say. So that's, I don't need those decisions tonight. That's something that we will just fill in as it is being developed. There's a change in line, item seven, community outreach and survey. I know that you've retained the services of the Burgers, Alan and Leslie. And I did have a conversation with Alan. Both Whit and I had a conversation with Alan earlier. We talked about what the timeline is for that. I know that probably is of interest also to Elizabeth. But we had talked with Alan about having a prep period, first a formulation of the questions, some strategy discussions about that. The actual survey probably would happen in January and then we would get the survey results sometime in February. At least that's based upon the conversations I had with Alan. Alan, if you want to jump in and comment on that, this probably would be a good time to do that.
Okay, so thanks. And it's a pleasure to work with you all. And we're looking forward
Yeah, thank you.
To the project. So, thanks. We also spoke with Elizabeth this week and reviewed some of the necessary work that needs to take place before the survey can be launched. And Elizabeth can comment on that as well. And included things like building the email database. The one they have right now is, is relatively modest. So given the size of the population, we want to be able to capture a lot more email addresses and especially using the, using the circulation database, exporting that from library connection, having a contract with Constant Contact to be able to import the database to Constant Contact. So when it comes time to send the link or send the survey out to people, there'll be several thousand email addresses rather than the current database that the library has. And they're going to piggyback their weekly email newsletter on that as well. Elizabeth, correct me if, if there's something or jump in if there's something you want to add with that as well. So they're going to piggyback a new email, weekly email newsletter with that as well to communicate with people on a weekly basis so that the library becomes top of mind and, and they see what's happening in the library every week. Currently, the, the re-mail newsletter goes to a thousand people. And we want to see if we can get it up to four, five, six thousand people. As well as looking throughout the town and who else has a large email database, whether it's the Y, whether it's the town, who may be able to share that with the library, or just take the link to the survey and send it out to the library. And what Elizabeth said also is that they're looking at sending a hard copy to every household in town. So we want to make sure that all bases are covered with total hundred percent penetration of the survey or link to the survey throughout the total population in town. So that's going to be some work. And while that's taking place, we'll have a parallel track where we'll be working on the survey itself, which will probably be a five to six minute survey, no longer than that. As you all know, when you jumped into a survey and it's taking too long or it's too complex, you usually stop and you leave it. Our experience, what we did in Meriden as well, we had a 100% completion, which meant that every person started and completed the survey. So we want to make sure that you have the same opportunity.
Okay, great. So that's where we are in terms of overall timetable. The immediate milestones, this looks familiar to as well, I'm sure. Three items, as you see, are checked off and crossed off because those have been accomplished. You've identified the three initial sites and you selected a library consultant for community outreach and survey work. There are some items that are new. I mentioned before, the public information meetings sometime in January through April, updating the town council, January through April as well. Dates still to be selected. We do need to talk about planning meetings, functional discussions about the spaces that are required in the library. That hasn't happened yet. That's critical for our analysis of the square footage and how that square footage will fit on the sites. So I am pushing that out a little further to early January. So hopefully we can start getting some information from library administration about that. And maybe Alan, you can jump in at some point on that as well. You don't have to do that this evening. Maybe select a library planning consultant. That's, I'm going to hold that open. If that decision is deferred, it's deferred. And we hope to deliver that preliminary space plan or functional plan by mid-January. But in the meantime, we do need to get going on analyzing the sites. So for the time being, I'm going to be using thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one square feet. Why that number? That's the number we used before. But I do, we, we do need to have that confirmed. But for us to get started, that's the basis of the square footage I'm going to use. That number may actually grow. It depends upon the mix of functions that are anticipated for the library. And again, I'm going to lean on Alan about this because I had a conversation with him about it earlier. The functional spaces are driven by a number of things such as collections, the size of the collections, whether or not that's increasing or decreasing, and seating capacity and functions within the library itself. So I hope to have that preliminary space plan done by mid-January. In identifying the sites, we had hoped to meet with the town planner. We have not been successful in scheduling a get-together with the town planner. I'm still hopeful that we could do that. I've pushed that date out now to December the ninth. I was successful in getting information back from the town engineer. Mr. TC, he was able to get me some mapping information for starters, which is good. And I don't know if there are any additional thoughts about any remaining sites. I do want to talk about one potential site this evening, a little bit later. And whether you can identify those remaining sites by the next time we meet December sixteenth, that would be great. If not, that date will continue to slip. Okay, continuing. Here's a map that I was able to pull together from the town's Plan of Conservation and Develop. It shows in blue, all of the town-owned parcels. It shows in green, all of the dedicated open spaces in town. And in red, you can see the locations of the three initial sites that have been selected. I know that's, I know that's hard to read. The intention is just to show you approximately where they're located. This is the existing Prosser site. This is the town hall site. And this is the, and branch library on Blue Hills Ave. Also, it's the densest, from a population standpoint, I believe it's the densest part of town. But I'll have to confirm that with the town's Plan of Conservation and Development. This is just a close-up zooming into that map. This is Winton Berry Ave.
Yes.
Now here, this is Park Ave. Going out here, and this is Blue Hills Ave. Okay, we did take a closer look at the Prosser Library and the Riley Lumber Parcel. The Riley Lumber Parcel is here. This is the Prosser Library. And now we've overlaid the roadway that is being contemplated by the state. There are two rotaries located here. And interestingly, one of the rotary, rotaries lead into a portion of the Prosser site. Whether they envision some connection to the site, I don't know. I'm going to compare all of the three initial sites that have been selected from a geometric standpoint, the configuration of the site, and from the acreage. Three point six acres. Well, that should be enough acreage for a library project. However, this three point six acres also happens to have a brook that runs through it, which tends to flood periodically, which then divides this parcel into two halves, and then it's further subdivided. It's not an equal half on each side. So I'm going to show you a little diagram that we did a little bit later about comparing what does thirty-six thousand square feet look like compared to this parcel. But I want to remind everyone where we left off back in two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and sixteen, we had come up with a plan to add on and renovate Prosser Library and make a connection to what was then anticipated, the acquisition of the Riley Lumber Site. And we envisioned that the Riley Lumber Site could be parking, and there would be a pedestrian bridge connecting one side of the parcel to the other side of the parcel. I, I think we want to take another look at this. It may make sense, especially with that rotary being located here and a connection potentially to the site, and maybe a crossing of the brook at that point, to maybe look at placing a new library on the opposite side of the brook. We need to, we need to think about that as a possibility. As far as the town hall site, again, it looks like six acres. That's plenty of space, one would think. But there's a green line here, as you can see, that has the designation for wetlands. So that is something that we need to be careful of. Not that we can't build near wetlands. We just need to compensate for that wetlands, create some mitigation to make up for any wetlands that's affected. And the site is dominated by the town hall structure. It's a very prominent structure with a green in front of it. And when we looked at it last time, just to recall to the, everyone who participated, we ended up with a three-story structure for a new library. That would be a separate detached structure on this site. And enough parking to serve the library as well as the town hall. And there was conversations at that time about making some sort of connection to the commercial parking that's available here to neighbors, so that maybe there could be some sharing between the neighbors' parking requirements and the library and the town hall requirements. I think there was a comment made by someone after the last committee meeting about maybe looking at the Bloomfield Avenue side of this parcel. And we could certainly take a look at that, see if that offers any opportunity for development. But my sense is, we ended up last time with a three-story structure. We probably will end up with a three-story structure again on this parcel. This one, we haven't studied yet, but I'm feeling very optimistic about this parcel, quite frankly. It's a three point four acre parcel. It's level. And it's a good geometry. I think we can easily accommodate not only a branch library, expansion of a branch library, perhaps even the main library building on this site. We looked at comparing all of these parcels at the same scale. So then now you can see side by side the size of these parcels. The one on the left here is the McMahon parcel. In the middle is the existing Prosser site, and on the right is the town hall site. And we asked Diana in my office, take that thirty-six thousand square feet and put it on one footprint. How big is that footprint compared to these parcels? And so you can see faintly an orange here. I'll just outline it with my cursor. Thirty-six thousand square feet is approximately this size. Fits nicely on the site. Why am I suggesting one floor? Because that's probably the worst case scenario. And it may be the most flexible configuration also. When it comes to library planning and to make it a very efficient space that requires less staffing, I believe if you can accommodate everything on one floor, and then the future, you can move things around as your needs change. No site is perfect. Every site has some geometric or topographic challenges. And so then we end up stacking that footprint into a two-story structure because there isn't enough room, or even a three-story structure. But typically, when you do that with a library plan, you end up potentially having additional staff, potential additional circulation, you know, I mean, I'm talking about person circulation, stairs and elevators, and additional square footage to travel one floor to the next. So a one-story configuration takes up this much room on the McMahon site. A one-story configuration takes up all of this space on the Prosser site. And a one-story configuration on the town hall can't fit easily, quite frankly. So then we said, okay, what about a two-story configuration? Very comfortable on the McMahon site. Better on the Prosser site, as you can see here. Although if we put it in this location, it would have to be elevated above the floodplain because the floodplain is fairly wide in this location. And then on town hall, still not quite compact enough, in my opinion, although we could try to do a rectangular shape on this end of the parcel, or rectangular shape along this end of the parcel. So we'll, we'll examine those things. Okay, I, I do want to share with this committee the fact that there is a town Plan of Conservation and Development. Fascinating reading. You absolutely owe it to yourself to study that plan. It has in it demographics, transportation planning, future growth of the town. And I urge you to become familiar with it, but I think, because I think we're going to be referring to it as we develop the sites and then talk about how these sites fit into or don't fit into the town's Plan of Conservation and Development. So become familiar with it. There's another study that was done, the Bloomfield Center Plan, which was done by the Economic Development Commission back in two thousand and thirteen. An excellent study that talks about the benefit of developing the Bloomfield Center using certain guidelines and certain principles, such as, for example, shared parking. If it's possible to create parking areas that offer some synergy between occupants in the, in the Bloomfield Center. I mean, according to the zoning regulations, every parcel needs to provide parking. On the other hand, we've done projects in which there could be shared parking. And probably the best example is a project we did in the town of Wilton, an expansion of the Wilton Public Library. That parking area shared, was shared with a bank and shopping areas right in the center of Wilton. It's a good planning strategy. So if there's a way we can accomplish that, that goes to the goals established by the Bloomfield Center Plan. There's also discussion about how trying to create buildings along the edges of the streets in the Bloomfield Center Plan would go a great, go quite far in trying to strengthen the imagery, the density, and the, and the beauty, quite frankly, of the Bloomfield Center. So if we can accomplish that, that would be great. It just so happens, in the Bloomfield Center Plan, there's a discussion about potentially closing Seneca Road. A very oddly shaped area of land that is also the Farmers Exchange Site. I believe one of the buildings here is the Farmers Exchange. And that, that odd-shaped area fronts onto Park Avenue. So you potentially could get frontage of a new library right on Park Avenue. I haven't had any conversation with the town planner about this, but I was very intrigued to see this was included in the Bloomfield Center Plan study. Where is, does that occur here on this town map, this green area right here? So it's very close to the town center. In fact, it's identified as part of the town center. It's right on Park Avenue. I don't know if we can achieve what we need to achieve for the library. This is not officially one of the sites that's, was selected by this committee for us to study. I leave it to the committee to discuss whether we want to pursue this or not. It's not going to be easy. If I back up to this, you can see that there is, I believe this is a CBS.
Right.
Right, right here.
It seems to me that there are already locations in that Park Avenue area that you're saying would be open for build, build out?
Well, there's, if they close this street, if they close Seneca Street, then you can create some additional frontage along Park Avenue. But whether it's achievable, I don't know. So we have CVS here on the left. And I think we have Farmington Savings, I believe, here on the right. So, so I, I don't want to ignore this because it's identified in the Bloomfield Center Plan. It may not be achievable, but I leave it to you, to the committee, to ask whether or not you want to even consider this as a possibility. Maybe it's been studied for other purposes in the past.
And he talks about that.
I think with the, I mean, I think that the Farmers Exchange Parcel that was discussed at the previous meeting is just that northernmost up there. And then below that, the small parcel just below it is, I guess, is the podiatrist's office that was referred to. But this, this portion of it, the leg that comes down to Park Street, it seems like there may be a question of, of property ownership there too, if, if you're cutting across the two adjacent properties. I don't know how that works, what they're suggesting with this diagram.
Yeah. I'm not sure who created the diagram, but I was very intrigued to see that someone had thought about this being a potential site. That could enhance the
Bob or Mark can chime in because it's my understanding that, that Park Street abutments is there is, there's a mall where Elizabeth is, and there's also the CVS Plaza. So I don't know that there's any open area on Park Avenue that I'm aware of.
There isn't.
Yeah. Well, Mark, you guys.
Okay, yeah. Number one, there's a podiatrist's office and there's a hair salon there. Both properties are for sale. But that's where it stops. For instance, where you see the
Here.
Yeah, right, right where they had, that driveway right there. That's where those two properties end. Oh no, I'm sorry. Come down further. It's the next line, right there. That's where those two properties end. And if you close off Seneca Road at that point, made it a dead end, that still leaves CVS and the mall as is, because I don't think we can take that, that land by CVS. I think they own that.
Yeah.
So that would close off, that eliminates the ability for Park Avenue. But I don't know, I'm the one who suggested this, and I don't know whether or not the land up where Farmers Exchange Building was, which is near the top of that.
Yeah.
Is big enough for you to put a two or three-story building on it. Because you would need to use the rest of it down through there for parking. That little piece above where, where the Farmers Exchange Building appears to be, actually is not available. That's the railroad has a right of way on that little piece.
So. Right. So this is a railroad right of way that
Yep. One little, one little piece.
There's a little piece here.
Yeah, just a little piece at the top of that. It's about ten foot long. That's it. But I have a comment for the Burgers. Both senior services and leisure services, as well as town hall, have emailed lists that they sent out to people. And I don't think there's a lot of duplication in those three.
Great.
All right. So that can give you a lot more people. They probably, between the three, they probably, in the library, it probably covers probably seventy to eighty percent of the town.
And the school district also has a, a thing that they call power tools and a backpack where they send out information to parents as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Just, just going back to Seneca Road, you can, you can put that blow up back on there. I think what, what Whit said is, is maybe problematic, you know, with those privately owned pieces on either side of Seneca, yeah, at, at that end. You know, I think that dotted line is just representing maximum potential without respect to ownership at that point. And Greg, the Elizabeth's and Liberty Bank is shown there in, in the, in that lower right-hand corner. Yeah, that, yeah, that is the building there. So, I mean, I would, I would think you could easily So, I mean, I would, I would think you could easily quickly take a look and see what the potential is here. With or without that tail at the, you know, at the bottom of the screen. See, see if something fits and whether it should be pursued or not. Cause I, I, I think it it should be looked at. That's, that's my feeling.
Mark, are you suggesting that it could touch Park Ave?
Well, I, I'm suggesting we take enough of a look at it to find out if it has to touch Park Ave. And, and, you know, if it doesn't work without touching it, then then I think we could have a further discussion on how viable it is or isn't. But until we know what the potentials are, how much of it we would need, and whether it's viable at all in terms of acreage and access and parking.
Wanted to be on one of the major arteries from a, sort of a public presence standpoint. So that if, if it can't connect to Park Street or to Wintonbury, it's going to be kind of in the, in the back of the town center in a sense, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would. And I also think that everyone should take into consideration the traffic pattern in this area of going across the railroad tracks in both directions. The intersection there at, at Jerome Avenue. And the impact that if you were to cut off Seneca, the impact it would have on the community. People walk in the center of town, people ride their bikes, people walk to the bus stops in that area. And I think that although, you know, it's something for thought, I really don't think it would be good for that neighborhood. I travel this road every day because I actually live on Wintonbury Avenue. And I see how traffic backs up. They've changed the lighting pattern, the light, stoplight pattern to kind of alleviate how traffic gets backed up there at that area. But I think to put a building there of the size that you're looking to do it would not be advantageous to not only this immediate community, but the overall community of Bloomfield as well.
No, no, and I, I appreciate all these comments. So I, I just wanted to make sure we're touching base on everything that has been brought up. If, my, my sense is that it's, this is probably a long shot for a number of reasons. It's setback, it's not going to be very visible. Quite frankly, and the geometry may not lend itself easily to a, an appropriately sized footprint of the building as well as parking that's going to be required.
I had a point also.
Richard.
Yes.
Lois. Um, I think another hope that we have is that someday there might be a commuter station there. Many, many years ago, we worked very hard on establishing the Griffin Line. And hopefully at some point, that will come to fruition when people realize that they shouldn't be using cars all the time. I don't know whether having the libraries next to the station would be a plus or a minus, but I think you might need the land for the station.
No, I think that's a very good observation, Lois. There's been talk about the Griffin Line for quite some time. So yeah, this, this land probably would be better served as a train station. If that Griffin Line comes back, that would be the ideal location. It would be a station right near the center of town.
I mean, it, it looks to me like you've got three good viable alternatives without spending a whole lot of time on that long narrow piece of land. Which for a library to back up to railroad tracks, I don't know if that's the best situation either. So to me, it would, it would create an awkward building design if you could even get enough land there.
I, I don't disagree. So I did want to bring it up. What we owe you is looking at potentially six sites. And the sooner we identify those additional sites, the better. We all will be off, but if it's only three, then it's only three. We're going to continue with these three. And exam, examine them in much more detail and look at a few options on each of them.
Excuse me, I have a.
Her hand up, Richard. I want to make sure that she's able to, go ahead Ava.
I, I remember the Farmers Exchange, and I think another thing you would have to look at there is contamination of the soil. They worked with fertilizers, both solid and liquid. They were filling people's lantern tanks with kerosene. All of that site may have serious abatement of, of all of those chemicals if you were to choose that. And I know that that's wildly expensive.
True. All of that is true, Ava. Thank you.
Would there be more?
Excuse me, yes. Thank you Nancy.
That's it for my presentation. I was just leaving it up to any comments or questions.
I do, I do have questions. I, I want to know if you are looking at other design alternatives outside of the thirty-six thousand square feet.
Well, I need.
I'm sorry?
I, I'd be more than happy to look at more than thirty-six thousand square feet, but I need help. I need some direction from the library administration.
Okay, I, I, I'd like to, Elizabeth, if, if you could kind of give us that information, because I'm still of the mindset that thirty-six thousand square feet is too big. And so I, I want to have a better understanding. Like I've said during previous meetings, with the result, as a result of us having three thirty park and all of the meeting spaces in which three thirty park offers, is it still necessary for us to have a library of that size to include so much meeting space? So I, I'd like a better understanding with regards to that. Please and thank you. And I'd also like to know. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on, on that. Maybe it'll come up. If it doesn't, I'll, I'll circle back on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, I can't see hands. I don't know if there are any other hands raised, but if not, it's just a time.
Mark has his hand up.
Yeah, Richard, can you go back to the schedule? The first slide. I just wanted to understand. You've got, you've added the public information meetings. But down lower, near the bottom, you have public presentations. Trying to distinguish between the two.
You're right. So public presentations was originally part of the schedule. And they, they may be redundant. They may not be a need to have both lines, but I put, put it up here just to make it more visible. Okay. We, we, we may end up dropping that line here at the bottom.
Okay, and something else to just research, and that's and you already talked about working with Nancy on, on the town council meetings. And you also have a town council finance subcommittee meeting happening in July. Just, just to throw out there, there's probably other subcommittees of the town council that will need to work in there as well as part of that overall council update.
Okay, I'll, I'll discuss that with Nancy and see if we can flesh that out a little bit more fully.
Thank you.
All right. Any other hands up, Nancy? I can't see it.
Mayor has her hand up.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question. I do believe that we have three good sites. But I also thought that we were going to, in the other site or possible sites, we are going to get some input from the community. And I see that we have a, I think it's a December sixteenth date for the possible other sites. Are we going to have an opportunity to get some input from the community as to possible sites? Thank you.
So the December sixteenth date comes from me. Hoping that we would just give ourselves a deadline for identifying remaining sites. How we determine those sites has not been determined, whether they're sites suggested by this committee, by the town planner, or members of the community, I don't think we've established yet. So let's talk about that. How do we, how do we? If Madam Mayor, you believe that that's something we should solicit from members of the public, I'm open to that. But is that something that is done as a part of the survey? That the burgers will be preparing? I'm not sure how we implement that.
So it could be a part of the survey. I think I was just a little confused with the time that you had on there. So if we're open to it being a part of the survey, and it's not going to hamper all the work that you're going to have to do to put into it if we get other suggestions, that's fine. I was just trying to make sure that we get that.
Madam Mayor, it was my thought, and I believe what we had discussed previously, is that the committee would, and it could be part of the survey, share the recommendations with the community and have their input in that way, but not to open it up to have the community list all the sites that they want in town. Because we don't, personally, I don't have the time to add that so that we could be ready for a referendum in July. But secondly, it was the committee's job to come up with a, a number of sites that we could go to the community and say, okay, these three or four sites, you know, which site, you know, would you like to see selected? But I, I didn't anticipate that it would be an open process for the, you know, community to come back and we get ten or twenty different recommendations. It would just be probably more than what we can handle and what we need to do.
And I, I, I understand that as well. So if that's what you're saying that you would like as the committee, that's fine. I just want to make sure that when this is done, that the community takes ownership of it, right? Because once the committee is finished with it, it now becomes a a, a building for all of us. So however you believe is the best way to make sure that the community gets buy-in is fine. I also sometimes think that other people might be thinking a little bit outside the box and a little bit more creative than we are. And they might have a great space that we haven't thought of. But either way, as long as the community has some input, some buy-in, that's all I request.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to, once we narrow down these sites, to include that information on the, on the survey and give them an opportunity to weigh in on preference. But to have it be an open suggestion, it means we'll be chasing down a lot of dead ends, right? So we really need to know what sites are available, who's willing to sell, what lands could be possibly acquired.
I, I think what we're envisioning on the survey, however, is is more the vision of reimagining the Bloomfield Public Library and what it can be. And getting people excited about that and not just asking for, for opinions like that, but also helping to create the vision of what the library for everybody can be. And asking them those kinds of questions that will elicit from them the information that will inform this committee, as well as informing the board and the administration of the library. What kind of library they need to create. And not necessarily the brick and mortar look of the library, but what is the library, what is the library going to feel like?
Right.
Who is it going to serve? How is it going to serve?
Yeah, where, I mean, what we're saying is we want to reimagine what your library is going to be like, right? We want to build a twenty-first century library. And that probably has some elements of what you have now, but it probably has a lot of other things that people are going to tell us from the survey or things that we're going to suggest that can get them really excited. And, and I think even to a certain extent, you know, what we've all lived through the last nine months is going to start to inform the way we think about libraries and their role as, as the world around us has changed, right? So flexible spaces, I think, we, we talked about that earlier.
Smaller collections.
Smaller collections, really supporting everything. I think the one thing we've, we've all learned from, from COVID is that you know, not everybody has access to high-speed Wi-Fi and, and, and computers and that kids who need to learn in alternative settings need to be able to rely on the library in those hours when schools are closed to, to thrive in the educational setting. So there's a lot of big issues that I think we can test with the community, and they will probably tell us based on some of the experiences that they've had in the nine, in the last nine months, which have made them rethink a little bit about what the library should be all about.
Bob?
Yeah, just one comment that also at the same time that we're doing this, we need to provide additional space for future needs and future offerings, because I can't predict the future more than anybody else can. And I don't know what the need, needs and desires are going to be in the future, but one of the things, Chris, with the Human Services Building, we did add extra space, not just the flexibility, but some extra space there to help deal with future needs, because I don't know what, what programs are going to show up in the next, after five years. And I think we need to make sure we have enough space to, to provide that opportunity for the library staff.
Dunsey has her hand up.
I, thank you. I agree with you, Bob, but I also think that with not being able to tell the future, we should have an ability to project. And I, and I, and I lean on the professionals to, to create that ability of projection. This is, this is their profession. This is what they do. I expect them to know all the trends and to be able to guide us in that way so that we can be prepared. But with that being said, I see that there's a, with preparing for the future three thirty park, I see that right now immediately, since it's open, it's a lot of unused space. So I don't know if it's going to take five years or six years for that space to be utilized and maximized or not. Thing about it is, is I just don't think it's a good idea to spend all of this money to, to, to anticipate something that, that we have no idea as to what that could possibly be. I also want to ask the burgers, is it possible if you can provide this committee with a sample survey?
Oh, of course.
Yeah. No, 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 but not before you send it to the community. I'd like to see a sample survey of what you've sent to other communities.
I mean, yes, but.
To get an idea as to what type of questions you ask and how do you get to your answer?
Well, I think.
I want to see what the root is to, to your data gathering.
Well, we can do that, but I think what I'd rather do is provide you with a draft of the survey for you. And then you can give us your comments, and we can discuss what we're looking for and what else you might be looking for. And then, because it, I mean, there can be multiple iterations. So we can change anything we want to change. But, but what I'd like to do first is get a sense of, and I think we're getting that of you and who you are and, and who the library is, and be able to give you a draft with a flow of questions. And then we could all work on it together if you like, or get the comments from you. As I mentioned before, what we look for is satisfaction. Just, look, right now you have two locations. So you have two locations with disparate hours. You have a one point eight million dollar budget for two locations in town. So, and we want to make sure we elicit information from people who use both of those locations and people who use neither of those locations. I think what we're going to find also is that there are plenty of people in town who may go to a different town for their library services. And we want to find out why they do that as well. So I, I think if you, you know.
So are you telling me that you're unable to provide a sample or no? So are you telling me that you're unable to provide a sample or no? Or, or you are?
Well, I think it, it makes more sense and is probably worthwhile to give you a sample of what yours might look like. And then we can work on it from there. They're all different. I mean, so, so.
I understand that, but my reason for asking for that is to have an idea as to what it is you look for. Now, I understand that, Mike, this community is much different than Maryland, or maybe other communities in which you've, you know, implemented these surveys. I just wanted a, a clear idea as to what I should expect. Okay, what it should look like, what type of questions are on there to, to really drive further questions that I may have, once you provide the sample that is crafted specifically for Bloomfield.
And, and again, they're, having some clients have to do with a building, some have to do strictly with creating a strategic plan. I mean, I mean, yeah, just they're not the same.
Let me pass this on to, to Lois and Mark, then I wanna move on to Nancy's presentation.
And Ava's in the queue too.
To me, the, the sticking point here may be that we don't have the program defined. And that when we define the program, then we will know better what spaces we all think are important, and we can discuss those spaces, which will help us decide whether the number is too higher or too low. So if whatever we need to do to move the program planning along, seems to me what we need to do now, and if that means deciding to have a planning consultant to, to provide assistance, let's do that. But I, I think really we are going to be stuck without enough information until we get the planning done. And, and with respect to the survey, I also think that that is going to be part of what builds confidence in this planning committee of, among the people in the community, because we will be able to lay out, I think, in the survey, at least make it clear that we know what we're doing, we're thinking about the important things. We have parameters which we've used to consider sites, and it may be that they have other sites, but they, mostly they need to have confidence that we know what we're doing, so that when they come to approving this library, they'll be happy with it. Can I, can I just interrupt here for a moment? And, and thank you for sharing that, because I think that was important. But I think implicit in all of this is not just, you know, how many square feet are you gonna have for kids and how many square feet for adults? But what is the larger vision that you're trying to achieve, right? When you build this new library, I, I think from what we know about you so far, it's not that you're just gonna build a bigger, more modern library, but that there's some reason that's driving that decision, your vision, if you will, to either make it the community's learning center. I, I, I don't have the words for you right now, but I think it's important to, to build on what Lois just said, and to provide some framework that helps people think about it.
Right. And, and thank you. Hey, Richard, can I ask you to take down the shared screen? But also, I, I, I think that Lois and Budunze have touched on some really critical points, and we talked about the external versus the internal piece of this. And right now, what we're talking about, what we're looking at is sort of the external, the outreach to the community, which will dovetail into the internal piece, which would go into the service model, the space planning design and all of that, which is where we would look to Elizabeth and her team for their expertise, along with this committee and the community. But I think we're sort of mixing up external and internal. We really need to break those down, because I know that they merge, but it's, right now, we're really looking externally, and we will kind of get more information with the Burgers and come up with a survey sample for the committee to review and approve. But I wanna make sure that the professional staff is involved in that process, because they're the ones who know our customers best. And with that, I wanna turn it over to Mark, and then Ava, and we're gonna move on to Nancy's presentation.
I, I just wanted to add on to what you said, Greg, regarding the, the buy-in of the community of the location. And that it is important, we share what this committee has used as criteria, the places that we've looked at, and, and share all that with the community, so that they know we've done our homework and why we've come to different conclusions about different sites. But we do need to make a decision how that gets delivered. You know, does it, does it get delivered at public meetings? Is it part of the survey? Is it part of both? So I, I mean, I don't have an answer to any of that, but, but it's important that it, that it get out there in the right fashion for that buy-in.
Thank you. Ava?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make a couple of quick points here. I, I think when we're looking at the old plan for the previous library project, that that comes with baggage. Libraries have changed. The emphasis in the programs has changed. So looking at a floor plan and saying, well, this was for meeting rooms, or this was for this use, or this was for a makerspace, is fraught, because those are no longer necessarily what will be in those spaces. We don't have a library of things. We might want one. We might decide that a makerspace is something that no longer meets the needs of the younger patrons. We might want to emphasize more services for teens that would include a digital studio, which other members of the community could also use. I don't think we should look at an old set of floor plans and limit our thinking. The point of libraries is service, and service requires as much flexibility as possible. It requires the absolute expertise of our professional staff. That is why we have Elizabeth and her team. They know these things. They are professionals. Of course, they want input from the community. Of course, they want input from us. But we have these people because we know they are capable of coming up with a fantastic program in an, in a space that is built to accommodate not only now, but decades in the future. And I, I don't want us to limit our thinking based on an, on a sketch from years ago, or the kind of library that maybe I went to, and I'm old enough to be your grandmother. So I, I think we need to think more broadly and be creative.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to turn this over to Nancy for our planning, building project discussion.
Thank you. I, I just wanna preface this by saying, this is a presentation. I'm not gonna give the exact presentation, but it's a presentation I did with a law firm in a construction manager at last year's Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Annual Meeting about how to do a successful building project, and they actually chose the Three Thirty Park Building Project, which I think that, you know, most of us in the community can say has really ended up turning out well. So it was based on that, and I'm not gonna go slide by slide on everything, but I really was hoping to give people a flavor of what they can expect over the next three years or so, because we're gonna be in this for another, another couple of years, and maybe explain some of the terminology that you're going to be faced with, and that you're gonna hear, and give you a brief explanation for those of you who may not be in the industry, as I am not, other than overseeing these two capital projects for the town. So that's the, the, the framework in which I'm going to present, and I'm gonna start with the PowerPoint slide that I sent to everybody. It's gonna zip by some of these. Okay, so first, we, we've already got this in place. This is a makeup of a building committee. There's no magic to some of these numbers. These were just some recommendations that we gave to other municipalities that were thinking about doing it, that had worked well in other communities, talking about the number, on the makeup of it, you know, some types of characteristics you like for both your leadership as well as for the, the actual members. There's no need, we're already here. We have a few slots maybe open, and these were maybe some of the things we can consider moving forward. I wanna spend a few minutes on this. What this means when it says delivery methods, it's the construction, the way you're going to deliver a construction project. What's the method of construction that it is? One comes down to, as you can see from this, oops, go back, sorry. It talks about a couple of delivery methods, and the most common one that's used nowadays is the construction manager at risk, which is the CMR, says right here. And in that instance, you select a construction manager. The construction manager actually bids out all of your trade contracts. The HVAC, the, you know, they use the plants that were built by your architects. Your architects will spend a lot of time coming up with these plans. They'll work with the construction manager. The construction manager will bid out the individual bid packages, and they will hold the contracts. So the risk during the project would be, and they'll give you a, a, what they call, after they get all the bid packages, you'll agree to a guaranteed maximum price, and that's gonna be the price you're gonna pay for the construction of the actual building. There's the construction managers and advisor. That's not really a, a good method for Bloomfield, because that really would mean that the town, rather than the construction manager, would hold all of the contracts. The construction manager would merely serve as your advisor. This would work well in a community where you actually had a fairly large public works department, for instance, who would be able to, you know, understand and work and, and, and actually get their arms around all the bid packages. So you'll see on here that the, one of the other advantages to having a construction manager at risk is what they call qualification-based selection. So you may have heard in the past, and we do do it in certain projects here in town, low bid. This is not a low bid situation, so you're not stuck with the low bid. There's, there's a variety of factors that would go into your selection of a construction manager. And you really don't have a construction price, because what you're gonna do is select your construction manager, and then several months later, they will put out the bid packages. It's a great team approach with the architects and your owner's rep. And this is the GMP I talked about at some point, after they bid out all of the trade packages, and they have decided, they've made a recommendation on, on all of these, they'll come up with the price for the project, which this building committee would approve. And then after that, they begin construction. Another advantage, obviously, is there's one point of responsibility, and that would be the construction manager. The construction manager you would retain before you go out to bid, obviously, and they would work with the architect, maybe on identifying some areas that might be appropriate for value engineering, which is another way of saying, we're gonna do it in a different way, perhaps have PVC pipe instead of cast iron pipe, or, you know, some, something along those lines. And then it talks about the owner's advocate, and by that, I, I'm gonna talk about that separately, so you'll just move on from there. You're gonna see a lot on the budgets about what's included and where. You'll have your hard costs and your construction, which is going to include the subcontracts, which is your trades, the plumbing, the electricity, the steel, all of those components, plus a construction contingency. And then on your soft cost side, this is all going into your budget. You'll have your furniture, any fixtures and equipment, IT, professional fees, which would include your architect, if you have any additional engineers, your owner's project rep, bonds and insurance, including builder's risk, moving costs. If you have testing costs, and also commissioning, if that's something that we feel is necessary, and commissioning is commissioning the actual operating units of the building. So not in this, but I wanted to go over a little bit of the timeline that you can expect during this project. And I'm gonna give you, right now, we're gonna start with an anticipated approval referendum date of November twenty twenty-one. For the Three Thirty Park project, that referendum passed in November two thousand sixteen. Same with the Public Works project. The construction managers for those projects were hired March of two thousand seventeen for Three Thirty Park, and in July of two thousand seventeen for Public Works. So there was a little bit more of a lag time on the Public Works side. The packages were bid out in January of two thousand eighteen for Three Thirty Park, October of two thousand eighteen for Public Works. The owner's project rep was bid out and, or began work in June of two thousand eighteen, about the same time as construction started, and in September two thousand eighteen for Public Works, again, about the same time as construction started. Personally, I would recommend that maybe we bring them on board sooner. And I'll explain what they do in a few minutes. And then you begin your construction. For the Three Thirty Park project, they were moved into the new building and got their temporary certificate of occupancy in June of two thousand nineteen. So from the time the referendum passed, there had been close to three years. Public Works, that project is not finished. There are some, by the way, there still are some punchless items and some additional work that was beyond the scope of the original project, the Three Thirty Park that's ongoing. Public Works project is not completed yet, so you can see why we chose the Three Thirty Park project as the successful project. So that's the timeframe. So you can see with Three Thirty Park, it was about three years for Public Works. It's been four years, and we're not quite done yet. So depending on the nature of the project, you'd be looking at similar schedules. We talked a lot about, or we talked about an owner's rep previously at another meeting, and I wanted to give you an idea of what owner's rep would do for you. I have to admit, I am a proponent of an owner's rep. Again, we don't have in-house personnel who would be able to handle this. Your owner's rep is not going to manage your project for you. However, they're gonna monitor the project for you, and they're gonna report back to you. They work for you, and they're your eyes and your ears. They will handle things or coordinate things like the move management. They'll help obtain furniture quotes and bids, same if you're looking for oversight, for instance, on a commissioning agent. We did use a commissioning agent on Three Thirty Park. We did not use one on the renovation and expansion of Public Works. They don't have the authority to order your construction manager to do anything that would be more aligned with what your architect can do, but they are integral part of the team. They typically will attend the subcontractor meetings that are held either, you know, weekly or bi-weekly, depending on the construction. And, and let me tell you, two years from now, you're gonna be looking back and say, oh my God, I can't believe what happened two years ago. We were talking about all this stuff, and now we're talking about, you know, whether or not the steel is gonna be done on time, or, or something like that, if there's an issue with that. So that's what that's what your owner's project rep will do. And now I just wanna give you, I handed this out. I don't wanna go over all of them, but there is a, sorry. There's a list of do's and don'ts that I sent you, and obviously, I did have a role in establishing these, but there's a few of them that, I think, based on some of the things that worked well on Three Thirty Park and Public Works, as well as what didn't, is something that we might wanna look at. And for me, those would be things like getting independent estimates at key points and pay attention to them. And that's one of the reasons why I recommend that we bring maybe the construction manager on sooner, and have your construction manager also do an independent estimate from your architects, and then have them reconcile them. We found that worked very well in Three Thirty Park, and that project came in on time and under budget. So it's something that worked well. It's something that worked well. We did not have that under 330, I mean, under public works. And we are at the end, we're not finished with the project and there are some funding issues. The other thing that I feel strongly about is to make sure you, we've talked about this tonight. Establish your programming requirements early in the process. Some of the don'ts is setting unrealistic goals or worrying about things you can't control. You know. Everything has a price and when we talk about that, we talk about maybe unestablishing unrealistic budgets or timelines. Don't expect the project to be free of change orders. I know people hate that word change order. Change order is not necessarily a bad thing. You know, Ava spoke about flex space flexibility or, you know, let's just say that a year ago, we had decided we wanted maker space. And as we were moving along into project, maybe we don't want maker space. Maybe we need the space to be more open and more flexible and we can accommodate that through a change order. That's not such a bad thing necessarily. There may be some costs associated with it, but that might be something that you might find be more flexible for your building going forward. So you know, change orders are not a thing to necessarily fear. What you do want to do, however, is to manage that change, those change orders and manage that change order process and control it. And that's another area where your owner's rep can help you. Your architect will be the one that ultimately will be recommending and helping us with change orders. But your owner's rep, a good owner's rep should be able to, and I would expect weigh in. On the feasibility of a change order or the necessity for a change order. And the cost of the particular change order. The other thing that I want to, I would emphasize and encourage this committee to do is when you get to the stage of selecting a construction manager. The one of the questions you ask them is what percentage dollar amount that their change orders are and that'll tell you. Essentially, that'll tell you a lot. Higher percentage change orders typically will mean things got missed into plans. Or it could be an owner, but. That so keep that in mind when we get to that RFP process and you're interviewing construction manager firms. If that's probably going to be a question that somebody's going to want to ask and should ask. Another don't I would say would be to. Underestimate enabling tasks. Winter conditions, temporary power. We did run into these things at 330 Park. Luckily, there was enough in the budget to be able to allow some construction to go on during during winter conditions. And the other thing that I can't emphasize and one of the big. Big differences between 330 Park and the public works project was this last one was postponing critical financial or scheduled decisions. We've heard Tai Su Kim Partners tell us at least on two occasions in my recollection about, you know, slipping from the schedule. We need to understand that. Time is money and money is time and. Those things can be deadly to the project. So you know, when when they're coming to us and showing us things in red. We need to treat that as a red flag and to be able to. Respond to that in a in a timely manner. So that's basically all I have. I'm happy to answer any additional questions. Either or provide you with additional information at a future date if there's something else you want, but. That's the Cliff's Notes version of what our life is going to be like over the next three or so years.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Also, everyone should know that Nancy presentation. Was included with the agenda and the notice. So it's on the website. And everyone on this call should have it, but if you don't have it and you would like it, please let Nancy know. We'll make sure you get the presentation. Any questions for Nancy? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Nancy. We're going to roll into Elizabeth's update.
A big news alert is that there is a new state librarian. She is a professor in law librarian. Coming from Philadelphia and we welcome her and I know that the library board has already reached out to welcome her as well. And I'm very hopeful that the library, the state library will have some. Positive things to come from that.
What's your name, Elizabeth?
Her name is Deborah Schander. S C H A N D E R. She has a very impressive resume. I did want to note that I spoke with Alan and it was very fruitful. We've already accomplished some of the action items from that conversation. Including reaching out to constant contact and getting that all started. The hope is to roll out that more upscale approach to communications from the library with the survey. And we are really excited about that and thankful for how easy it was to do that. We also reached out to the friends of the library to help with an incentive and they have agreed to. I I soft asked for an iPad mini if anybody else has a better idea about that. As an incentive for people to complete the survey, let me know and the friends will be funding that. We also already reached out to Library Connection and we were able to get all of the email addresses needed. So we will have a considerable amount of email addresses that we will be able to use. Those library email addresses were. Solicited specifically about library business and we will be sure to honor that. And there will also be opt-out language as there already is in all library email communications. But we are, we are really excited about that. And that's all there is for me.
Did the library connection tell you how many there were?
Yes, I believe there's just under 5,000. And I just wanted to also note, Alan, I know that you mentioned about library overlap. One of the wonderful things about Connecticut libraries is it's, it is the only state that. Your your library card can be used in any community. And you were saying that you think that there's, there may be a lot of people that leave Bloomfield to use libraries. I think that in Bloomfield is actually the exact opposite. We have, we are known for South Windsor, Windsor, West Hartford specifically. Loves coming to our main location. We service. And I think we show Bloomfield in a very good light in the way that our library operates. To the greater Bloomfield area. So that is something to take into consideration as we move forward with this survey.
So so considering that Elizabeth, do you know how many cardholders are non-Bloomfield residents? At the Connecticut card, right?
Correct. So everybody has their own library card and it's transferable. So if you're in our.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But but you can probably find out by asking, you know, the Connecticut card people. If they would want to tell you that.
Yeah. It's all, it's one of those things that all the library directors don't like to talk about because when you see the numbers, you're like, whoa. But it is, it is really interesting. And it Connecticut is very interesting like that. And there's also a lot of. Library patrons who have like their top five libraries they go to. So they go to their towns and then they're like, oh, well, I really love going to Wallingford and I really like, you know, going up, you know, shout out to Leah. And that's another interesting thing about Connecticut libraries. So that being said, ditto for Bloomfield residents. So a lot of people know what a good library is. So I do think that when. Solicit, yeah, when we, when we solicit solicit this feedback, you know, we'll be hearing a lot of different things about what people like about Bloomfield libraries and. And then in other libraries around the state.
And Elizabeth, you know, or do you recall, because I didn't say down the report you gave me. Do you know if you're a net lender or a net borrower of materials?
We are a net lender.
Net lender. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anything else for Elizabeth? Okay, great. We will roll into future meetings. Our next meeting will be on the 16th, followed by a meeting on the 30th. Nancy, any public comments?
See, okay, folks in the public, if there's anybody that would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hands. You're all quiet tonight. Wait, I thought I saw a hand go up and then it went down. There we go. We have Stan Casperson. Go ahead, Stan. Amute yourself. There you go.
Six Stone Hill Road. You gave me the opportunity three times. I'm intrigued. With the option possibility, take a look. At the Prosser site cited on the Riley property. That intrigues me. Among other things, what do you do with the old building? Does it become another? Town adjunct building? Number two, looking at the relative elevations with respect to the waterway. I have seen the Riley lumberyard underwater with everything floating. So I'm intrigued with that, but I think you need to give it a little more serious. Look see before you decide to hopscotch. Thank you.
You have Danielle Wong. Go ahead, Counselor Wong.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a quick comment. I am very delighted to see that one of the options. Presented was on the Blue Hills area. I think that I've been very loud about, you know, my favorite of that area and I would. Really like us to be more thoughtful in taking that area seriously in the future. I think that. The, I believe the reports earlier as far as having a desirable location, it's already flat. It's clear. There's opportunity there and I'd really like us to try and prioritize that, especially because it is a very populated area of town. It is a very underserved area town. Those people, the people on that area of town may need those resources, but may not be able to get to the central location currently in the center of town. So I just wanted to just put in my two cents there in regards to that, those options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public would like to comment, speak? Looks like that's it for the public comment.
Great. All right. This has been a great meeting, everyone. Thank you so much for your time and very robust conversation discussion. I wanted to give a quick shout out to Jesse White. Jesse has an article in the most recent edition of The Messenger. He wrote an article about the unveiling of a second Black Lives Matter mural. And talked about the impact on the students, talked about social emotional learning, which is something I'm just learning about. But it was a very well written and if you get an opportunity, if you have not seen it, please take a few minutes to read it. He did a great job. And then finally, I'm sitting here thinking and talked with a committee member or two. It may make sense at some point in the next few weeks to establish a couple of subcommittees so that we can get a lot of work done. Outside of the meetings and really make these meetings much more productive, sort of high level as opposed to getting into the granular issues. So be on the lookout for that. Kind of put our heads together and figure out what subcommittees might be relevant and helpful. And I'm thinking particularly right now on sort of the external piece that we're talking about with the burgers. Getting a couple of people to work with Elizabeth and her team to help us come up with the best way to get the information. Included and also how to best disseminate that information because I've been a big proponent of not only. Getting it done through the computer, but also through the mail and if we have to go to the grocery store and stand outside and get people as they're going into the grocery store. Finding ways to maximize the impact of the surveys. So be on the lookout for more discussions about that and also wanted to thank our folks from Tai Su Kim Partners for really being patient and working with us through this process. And. I'll take any questions or thoughts from the floor before we close, Bob.
Yeah, just one thing. I'd like to respond to the idea about wasted spaces, human services building. Before the pandemic, every space was being used virtually all day long. And there were some issues about how are we going to fit in these different programs into the space we have because. They ended up even using the rooms that were supposed to be for BATV for programs because there wasn't enough space available at particular times. I can tell you this, before the pandemic in there, knitting and quoting was going on. People were in. In the pool room, people were playing. Games in the lounge area. All three sections of the great room were being used. The multi-purpose room was in use. The youth lounges were in use. These are services for rooms were in use. The gym was in use. It was very both. The art rooms were in use. There was some dancing going on in the exercise room with the, that has the mirror along the side. It was a crowded building. It's the same time there were at least 10 to 15 people walking around the building. That was pre. Pre-pandemic. Right now, yeah, almost everything's empty because you can't be in the building. But that's true everywhere. I suspect that when the pandemic's over, that building again is going to be used 95 to 98% of its. Facility and we planned for that. And I think we need to keep that same concept in mind for the library. I don't know what the right footage is. But I do know that we were concerned whether or not 59,000 square feet was really going to be enough. The human services building. It turns out it's barely enough. So we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, Leah.
I'm not to belabor the point. I talk really fast. Don't worry. I just per Bob's point, one of the things that I had written down as a thought after we were talking about this, I know this is, you know, far out into the planning, but. The reason that people go to the library to do work and study and spend time there is because librarians are there. And they are professionals who are there to help them with whatever they need, whether it's printing or asking questions or helping kids with their homework. So that is one of the reasons that a library needs space for people to gather, aside from programming. But yeah, so that's it.
Thank you. Okay, with there not being anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much and we'll be in touch. Have a great.